Long way from having one, but a lot further along than it would be otherwise. I gave a little thought to this and I could get up here and yap around for a half hour, forty-five minutes and put everybody back to sleep. But I decided instead I would open it up to questions. It seems that, and this was one reason why I wanted to have this meeting, was there are, every time I run into someone, there's this question, there seems to be a lack of commonality as far as where we are in the process and people's understandings of where we are in the process. Brilliant. Much better. Okay. So I would just like to start by opening it up for questions. Any questions at all that you have and that I can clarify about the process about?
Where are we and where are we going?
That is a gigantic philosophical question.
As it were asked.
Where are we? Well, let's start with a little background because I'm going to guess most of you were involved in this process, unlike me, before the September meeting of the City Council. And I'm going to guess some or all of you spoke at that meeting. Where we are is in...is in Oz. So the City Council on October 18th, 2012, okay, so this is a year and a month ago, right? Voted a resolution to hire URS, which is the bridge construction firm. And they hired URS for a package with a formal contract to the tune of $1.175 million or thereabouts. And a professional services agreement for that contract, the title of it is Main Street Bridge Replacement. So for everyone who thought that the City Council had made up their mind before the whole charade of the past year, you were far more correct than you could have imagined because they had contractually bound us to spend $1.1 billion paying URS to do nothing. And the document is filled with references to demolish the bridge. There's no, there is not a single mention of the word rehabilitate in this. This is just the cover page in the financial, it's actually a complete document. So where are we? We're trying to overcome inertia that was generated, well, for the money, I think is really what it comes down to. It's always about the money and it's sort of what I've concluded. Where are we going? I think if I can answer that question globally, and I think that's the other reason I wanted to get together today, was to sort of narrow down for everybody's, from everybody's perspective, where are we going? Because I have, I stepped in and did something that sort of put me in the front of this for a short period of time, but I have no plane to do steering the ship. And I've sort of taken over steering the ship and I kind of want to give it back to the community and say, okay, let's do this as a community. This shouldn't be just me, me and Lenny, or me and Lenny and Dave, or whoever, just making decisions unilaterally for the community. So where we are is, the day after the September 17th meeting, I actually got involved because my wife, she and her mom had the Posh Moon down the street. She was upset, bridge being destroyed, so I sort of jumped in being the protective husband or idiot or whatever. And it was on the phone to the State Office of Historic Preservation the next morning and realized very quickly that the bridge had, was completely eligible for listing on the National Register but had not been nominated. So first, does everyone understand what it means to be on the register? Because it's a subtle, it's a very subtle distinction.
Isn't that so that you're, the register has a historical item that cannot be destroyed?
No. Thank you for stating it so perfectly. So the significance, in terms of legally, the significance of the bridge the day before I filed the nomination in early October, and now, there isn't it. Okay? The bridge was historic and I think it might be Mr. Noack who once asked me this question, or I don't remember who, that someone said, "How do you know it's historic? Why is it historic?" There is a measuring, Caltrans has a system for determining what is and what are historic properties and what are not. There has never been any doubt, the city references in their documentation going back to the very beginning of the project, the bridge is historic. And that involves a technical definition that we don't need to go into here. All you need to know is the bridge is historic. What that means is you have to comply with, if you want to use federal funds to destroy the bridge, which is what the city is trying to do, you have to comply with certain requirements, NEPA, CEQA permitting requirements, other requirements to mitigate or prove that the loss of the bridge has to happen. In other words, if the bridge was really falling down, right, and it can't be saved, well, we have to replace it, fair enough. There would still be things that we would need to do legally before we could have the bridge down. There was a thought there that just hit right out of my head. NRHP.
So could I just interrupt about the, this goes, this non-destruction of the bridge in our agenda goes back to 1966 when the federal government enacted the Transformation Act in 1966 and there's a provision in there called 4F. And people who were involved in the double slide battle to prevent Caltrans from building and bypass through the state park know that section 4F prohibits you from destroying parkland and this bridge is, historic structure is also considered under that same category unless there's no feasible and prudent alternative. So legally, the bridge has a lot of support, but that doesn't mean it can't be destroyed. The city can determine it's not repairable and go through a process where they can take pictures of it and document it and then they can destroy it. So that's the worry about overall, section 4F doesn't necessarily prohibit the city from destroying it.
No, yeah, so it doesn't, and this goes as well for private structures. If you own a building and you're on a street that happens to be eligible for the register and you have it listed, it doesn't mean you campaign it, it doesn't mean you can't, it's a type of misconception basically that having the bridge listed is a form of actual protection. What it does do, in my mind, it did two things which may or may not be useful. The biggest one is it forces the City Council to address the idea that the bridge isn't just eligible to be, quote, historic. You know, no one's going to argue, if it's on the National Register of Historic Places and you want to argue that it's not historic, then, okay, I get it. With that thought in mind, it was clear to me that putting that hurdle in front of the city, in front of the city government and making them have to address the fact that eligible and on are two very different, very different things. Other than that, and other than being documented, getting the bridge listed and everything else, doesn't change anything, unfortunately.
You were going to address the issue that the city has gone through that process of offering the bridge.
Yes. So there are, I will come back.
Might be related.
Okay. There are a number of processes that the city was required to go through that they have not gone through. And the interesting thing about this structure, maybe this will be a little explanation of how this works, because now that I understand it. Initially, I was looking to Caltrans to stop this project because of all the things that the city didn't do. So the city basically applies for federal funds through Caltrans. Caltrans is the facility, or as you will. The program is called the Highway Bridge Rehabilitation and Replacement Program. What's supposed to happen is the city does all the stuff, if you will, that they need to do. They submit a packet to Caltrans. Caltrans looks through it, says, okay, this is good. And Caltrans hands the funding end of it to the city and it also provides some engineering support to the city and we're off to the races. The problem here is it's up to the city to do, to comply with the law. Caltrans is not taking liability on for, if the city fails to do something, it's the city's responsibility to do that something. And the only recourse, the only way to functionally stop this, to kill it dead, is to get the city itself, the City Council or the city itself via an initiative, which we'll talk about later. The city, it's up to the city to physically kill the project if we want to kill the project. Otherwise, Caltrans is going to keep hounding the law. With that said, Lenny was fantastic and got us a meeting with the Director of Environmental Services in the local systems branch in Oakland. And it was a, it was a great meeting, actually. I think it went very well for a variety of reasons, but to cut to the chase, they're having an engineering meeting in the next couple of days before they meet up with the project components for the city to evaluate whether they're going to let the city proceed the way they wanted to. Getting our opinion here. The city was looking for what's called a categorical exemption to the environmental process. A categorical exemption means the city says, there's nothing, nothing to see here, no one to, and basically gets rubber stamped all the way through. It minimizes expense. In certain areas, it could be brilliant. I'm not saying a categorical exemption is not appropriate in every case. In this case, however, because of the public controversy, public controversy alone is enough to move a project from categorical exemption to an environmental review. It's supposed to be a slam dunk right there. And when Lenny brought in the documentation showing Dr. Dooner, it was sort of like the light bulb went on, oh wow, this is not a categorical exclusion. I made an argument, presented an argument, which is now in a formal paper, as to why the sufficiency rating for the bridge, you've all heard that it's 24, oh my God, 24, oh my God, 24. Anybody who's interested, I can forward you this paper that details why that 24 is not, certainly not accurate. And the two things that make it a 24 are a guess that an engineer made in 1999 about the load bearing capabilities of the bridge, literally. If you change the inventory rating, which is the rating that Caltrans holds in their database for how much the bridge can carry, if you change the inventory rating from 16.2 metric tons to 32 metric tons, in a heartbeat, our sufficiency rating goes to 43 in the length of an eye. And that inventory rating is usually done with an engineering analysis. The problem is, they didn't have any of the drawings. So all they knew, they didn't know, looking at the bridge, that there are two internal ribs that reach 60% larger than the arches, than the ribs on the outside of the arch. So the way they drew the bridge in all their drawings, they're drawing it sort of like a U, right? So you have the arch on the bottom, the walls, and the dirt. And that's fine, that's an okay way to build a bridge. Ours wasn't built that way. Ours was built like a U with two huge ribs in the middle. So when you look at that crack on the northeast side, and if anybody wants to go down after the meeting, I'll happily walk you down and show you, if you look at the crack in that arch span, and you think that's 50% of the load bearing structure of the bridge, okay, that's important. If you find out that's only 20% of the load bearing structure of the bridge, it's like, ooh, okay, that's kind of cool to know too. So the inventory rating is a huge factor in the sufficiency rating of the bridge, that 24. It's really, literally 50%. You change that, you double the safety there, the sufficiency rating in the length of the eye. The second thing that contributes to the sufficiency rating is a somewhat subjective evaluation of the condition of the superstructure above the waterline. And this falls into the same category. Because you've got, you don't know what's inside the bridge, you look at this falling, which is sort of the pocket falling out here and there, and if you look at it and you don't know what's in there, oh my God, this is worse than it is. So that goes up one digit from a four, which is a four, to a five, which is fair, which it most likely will. Now our sufficiency rating is a 58. I think it's a 58. And all of a sudden, the bridge isn't even eligible for funds for destruction. You can't destroy, you can't destroy a bridge with a sufficiency rating greater than 50. It has to be below 50 before you can use HBR RP funds to destroy the bridge. So in a perfect world, we're going to drop off our packet of Caltrans, they're going to read through it and go, this is the most brilliant thing we've ever read, and we need to send an engineer out there right now to reevaluate this bridge, and he's going to find out it's 58 and we're off the race. I doubt this would be that either.
Probably an alerting for strategy, although I think that's where you are right now, is that it's a two-part question. You nominated it for, to be in the historical registry in October, right?
Mm-hmm.
That record. So that being the case, the two questions are, how long was the process from nomination to registration? The other question is, by virtue of the fact that you've already nominated, as if you nominated it, does that prevent anything from taking place until that process is over?
No. So let me answer the second one first, and the answer is no, just like it doesn't change the legal status of the bridge. The bridge was historic. As far as the federal authorities and the state authorities are concerned, the bridge is historic, period.
It's on the city's list.
And it's on the city's list as well.
It's on the city's list.
It's historic. So by placing it on the register, that simply makes it, that recognizes the historic nature. It doesn't make it more historic. It's historic. Where we are in the process is actually, it's pretty exciting. A week ago, this past Friday, so the process to get a property onto the National Register is that you submit an information packet, and I brought one different, someone will get it after the meeting. You submit a nomination to the State Office of Historic Preservation. The states are basically the gateway to the federal, this is a pretty good process, actually. So what happens, the states receive it, they forward it to the board. So first, first you have to get through the first step, which is getting the, which is getting the state to accept the nomination. Once the state accepts it, they prep it and then it'll go in front of the board meets quarterly, where the state office of Historic Preservation, Historic Preservation. At the quarterly meeting, they consider anywhere from five to 12 individual properties for nomination to the register. And once they approve the nomination, then it goes to the feds pretty quickly and it's de facto, it's, once the state office has approved it, once the state board has approved it, it goes to the feds and gets signed. Where we are in that process is because the bridge is threatened, the state office worked very closely with me, both crafted documents. They didn't edit, I had to write it, but I would send it off, like I knew when we were to the state historian would say, you need more in this, or you need more in that, and then I sort of probably went through 30 revisions. The, it was officially placed on the meeting list for February 7th, this past Friday. The 5th, the 4th of December will be published on the website. So if you go to the State Office of Historic Preservation website, roughly on the 5th or thereafter, and you go to, I'll send everybody the link once it comes up, but basically the properties that they're going to consider for the next meeting are all listed there. You can go to the properties, you can look at the documentation, you can sort through. I don't want to be overconfident, but it's a slam dunk. This is, this is not...
So once that registration occurs, then everything else that's gone so far stops and basically it's reevaluated?
Or better, even better, reevaluated. So the city needs to call for another?
Yeah, so the reevaluation, the register, the register, being listed on the register, other than making us, giving us the moral imperative that the city doesn't have, that's all it does. It doesn't stop anything.
I get it, okay. Well, that's pretty awesome. I'm amazed that you did that, and I think, I think it's awesome that you did that.
I, I think it was, it was a lot of fun, a lot of...I mean, you know, again, you know, Mr. Cresson's, there was a lot of information out there that made it a lot easier to tell that story. I will say, and for those of you who aren't familiar with this, the one thing that I did do that I think I'm most proud of, if there's something I'm proud of, is the drawings that, CSG, who provides the consultants for the city, the city engineer works for a company called CSG, so we don't have any actual engineers that work for the city, they're all contracted. They provided a drawing with each other proposals, which is, it's just not the bridge. And any, frankly, idiot that looks at it with a brain would say in two seconds, this is not the bridge. I mean, the bridge is 30 feet long, it just doesn't, the drawings don't match. At any rate, they claimed that there were no drawings available, blah, blah, blah. I found out that there was cable from Dave Cresson's handout flyer or whatever, and I spent that whole weekend chewing on it because in my head, I was like, why would there be cable, and why would there be cable? So I went down to the city that Monday morning and in two hours I had found five, four.
Counting.
Counting, yes, thank you. I seemed to decide, I had decided in my head that the county was the city. County Department of Public Works, very helpful gentleman, then went to the Historical Society and then went back to the county, but cut to the chase, within two, two and a half hours, I had found five, four original, original drawings of the bridge, two of which were before the bridge was actually built, two of which showed the changes that were made to the bridge and the foundation, and one of which had an acceptance signature on it from the city dated May 7th, 1900, which led to a city supervisors' meeting minutes. County, thank you, just throw something at me. County, county supervisors' minutes where Joseph DiVenedetti was in attendance, where they changed the design of the bridge from 32 piles underneath to 66 piles. There are 66 telephone poles under each end of the bridge out there because they knew they were building it on sand.
30 feet long.
30 feet long, 12 inches in diameter, eight inches at the other end.
They didn't cost $1.7 million, was it?
No.
Did you say that our city engineer works for CSG?
Yes.
Is that a conflict of interest?
I sure think so.
I mean, he's working for CSG, he's working for the city of Eppen Bay, and he's the one who proposed this whole thing.
And he's the one who gets, yeah, a pretty decent compensation coming back from any work that...
So you can really look at Sharman as having a conflict of interest?
As I said, I certainly do. Yeah. Yes, sir.
So, you know, you've been explaining the story of the bridge itself and the story of the historic component and its significance.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, there's multiple stories to tell here. So one of the ones that you referenced at the beginning was that at the get-go, the city basically committed $1.1 million of refunds to do something and only to do that thing. They set the goal and then regardless of what the other talk was, since then until now, that talk was all meaningless. They had already decided and everything they said that may have sounded like it contradicted it, they continued on that path and they've been on that path to this date.
Yes.
So maybe you could walk through, you know, what's visible or what you've been able to piece together that shows two things, you know, that you can explain if you can in the way you've been doing for these other things. One is what the economic, you know, interests seem to be. I mean, something is driving people trying to get this federal money and spend it in this way. And the other thing is something is driving, you know, the public presentation compared to what the actual decisions that are being made behind closed doors or whatever they are. And to the extent that you've managed to dope out either, a lot of information about either of those, I'm kind of interested in that.
Let me, you have a quick...
What everybody doesn't know is that what they want to do is have 18-wheelers come through Main Street where the bridge is today. When I was walking down here one day, there was an 18 extra-long bed truck trying to come on our main bridge. It had a backup and it took over an hour and 45 minutes for that truck to clear the bridge. So they have to go through Kelly Avenue.
That truck came into my spot and it was lost. The only reason he stopped there, he didn't know where it was going. It was a prime source truck. And so it wasn't that he couldn't get across the bridge, he didn't know where the hell it was at.
I like his story, Matt.
Here's the main thing. The big trucking company wants a water bridge instead of come on Kelly Avenue with 18-wheelers, then come on Main Street now. With the bridge that we have today, which is safe, yes, we have conditions up because of the Open Space Committee bought the lease ranch out and there's a dam there that controls the stream. When the stream comes down, it carries everything, doors, wood, everything. And now it's undermining the north side, but you can't get the dirt away. Now, if we had that dam put back like it was, it would protect the bridge.
Let's stay, let's stay here.
Well, anyways, the trucking, the trucking company got a hold with our city council to dig a wider bridge so they can bring on Main Street instead of going Kelly Avenue. That's the whole thing.
Okay. The only, the only problem I would have with that supposition is that the bridge is perfectly legal for 18-wheelers to drive across today.
If you can get it on the bridge, you can drive it across the bridge.
There's no way.
There is no way. I'm going to read, I'm going to, I'm going to read you from the latest Caltrans Bridge Inspection Report, which was done on July, this is, July, any, many, many, mo, I'm sorry, June 18th, 2013. Just give me one second, sorry. Here we go. Safe load capacity. A load rating summary sheet dated 10/14/2009 is on file for the structure, blah, 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 blah. Operational signs, there are weight limit signs at both approaches which indicate type 3, 8 tons, type 3S2, 12 tons, type 3-3, 16 tons. The city has posted the bridge at their discretion for the following loads, same signs. The posting was not made through a formal order by Caltrans. It is unclear as to whether or not the city has posted the bridge by official ordinance. And here's the really important part, Caltrans does not endorse the current posting. The bridge has been deemed capable of carrying all legal loads. A legal load, the 3-3 legal load is 40 metric tons.
I know why those signs are there.
Oh.
Because I challenged the city council members as to if the bridge is unsafe, you know, because is there a weight issue? And why aren't there any signs? So they went and put up some signs.
Which Caltrans, and actually, let me finish that last sentence. It is recommended that the bridge not be posted for load limits. Please.
I'd like to draw up here, the circulation element of the general plan calls for Stone Pine Road to cross over Main Street to serve property on the other side of the north side of the creek. And I'm wondering if, you know, the idea is to implement that plan and to create a wide intersection and the bridge be part of that intersection? Because it's very close to...
No, I've seen the drawings that they're trying to build. I can preference where or how, but in theory you'll see them sometime soon too. The bridge is not, the bridge is basically going to exit to the left at the north side where the bridge is now, and it's going to come pretty much right on the same approach here. It's going to be wider, but if you can imagine a bridge with sort of a gentle curve in the middle of it. So I, I mean, I don't know, but I do know I've seen the construction project as it is designed, and the bridge is not designed to be anything other than a two-lane with two, it's a very big bridge.
Well, it's true, you know, the circulation element of the general plan, that the bridge is very close to the water. And if you're improving an intersection, you know, making it sufficiently wide for vehicles, why not improve the bridge just right next to the intersection so that you have a smooth flow for right above the water?
David, I mean, it follows that, it follows that they're going to widen the road going down from 92 to the bridge because you've got two lanes plus two emergency lanes coming off the bridge into what's there now. Mr. Hooker.
David, I have followed the remarkable work you've done in the last six or eight weeks and one of the things that really turned my head was what you figured out about, in a phrase, follow the money. And I think that you've made a strong case here for everybody's understanding of what the actual conditions of the bridge are and that there's something surreptitious going on with the city. About what that is, maybe you could take a few minutes and explain the money and that'll kind of open everybody's eyes about what's probably going on.
This is a follow-up to your question. And this is, so I need to be clear here, everything I've set up to this point, as far as I'm concerned, is empirical fact. I've either proven it to myself or I can document it. If you were to come to me and challenge me and say, show it, I could show you that there's something there. So what's about to follow is more of, it's not a hypothetical discussion, but it's a very complicated analysis that I'm still trying to unwind. When, I wasn't at the meeting, but I watched the video of the meeting and what I saw, this is to a third-party observer who had no dog in the fight prior to that night, what I saw was five politicians basically committing suicide en masse. My brain tells me, one of the things that's a habit of mine is I always ask, why? If something happens that's sort of outside the natural order of things, I want to know happens that's sort of outside the natural order of things, I want to know why. Why did they do that? And it took about a month or so before I started to get to what I thought was the answer. And the answer, of course, is the money. It's not, it has nothing to do with the bridge, it has to do with the money. You can look at this in several ways. The city had already committed us via resolution to spend one point one million dollars on URS to build this new bridge. But there's a termination clause in that contract. We could have unwound that, been out whatever hundreds of thousands we had already spent and redone that. To me, that's not enough. And the decision up by the city to pursue these, and the thing you have to think about this as, it's not just a bridge, but you have to think of it as roughly eight to nine million dollars when you get to cost overruns, of revenue that comes into the city. And we've got a couple former mayors here, so maybe you can speak to this better than I, I'm sure you can actually. But basically, once the money goes into the city, where it goes from there, the people who gave it to you aren't paying attention to. Cut to the chase. The last five years, the Streets and Roads budget in the city, for the last five years, has a shortfall of four point two million dollars. Where'd it come from, where'd it go? I can't tell you because the books don't go into enough detail. The projected shortfall for 2013, 2014 in the budget, they're showing that their projected shortfall is going to be three point three seven one million dollars. And this is just in Streets and Roads. This is not in the whole budget. This is just Streets and Roads. Roughly two point seven million of that, don't laugh, of that shortfall, that four point two million dollar shortfall, came from work done on the Naomi Patrick Trail. There was grant money that was, you know, in 2011, Naomi talked to that guy right there, said, ooh-hoo, we got five hundred thousand dollars of funding for the Naomi Patrick Trail for the last two sections that were completed, the Roosevelt, Frenchman's Geek to Roosevelt and same word to Wave Press. As it turns out, they got one package for two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And the bridge ironically got another five hundred thousand dollars for the bike lanes on a new bridge. They can't use that for, and doing anything with the old bridge. So those two, those last two sections alone, as far as budget is concerned right now, what they've spent, they've spent almost a million dollars. They've spent, I think it's nine hundred and forty thousand dollars on those two sections. They budgeted that they were going to get five hundred thousand dollars from the Cal, County TA, Transportation Authority, and have to spend a hundred thousand of our own money. So the whole project budget was a hundred, or six hundred thousand dollars. We're already at nine hundred and forty, nine hundred and fifty, and we're short two hundred fifty thousand dollars that we thought we were going to have to pay for. Those are facts. That part is facts, and if anyone wants to really sit and go through it, I can go through it.
Is CSG involved in any of this trail building?
Yeah, everything.
Well, you got it right here. It's Charman and CSG. There's your connection.
Let's hear the whole story. There's a lot here, a lot of analysis.
Well, there's not, there's actually not, I mean, he's actually, to a certain extent, he's right. And, well, he's right, and he's, he's right, and, but there is more to it. And this is the other reason I wanted to get the community together. You know, we did this to ourselves functionally, right? That we elected the city council, who hired the city manager, who decided to farm every, and I'm not judging any of them, I'm just making an observation, to hire out departments, department heads to contractors who go figure and get a financial benefit from any money they spend on projects that they submit. I don't know if you're, a lot of you would know this because I posted it, but we have paid CSG over the last three calendar years. Take a shot in the dark, how much do you think we paid them? In your worst nightmare?
Two million?
Three point two million. For every man, woman, and child that lives in Half Moon Bay, we have paid twenty-six hundred dollars for twenty-six thousand man-hours of engineering at their average building. Twenty-six thousand man-hours!
That's, how many man-years is that? That's like ten man-years or something like that.
Thirteen man-years.
Thirteen man-years. So that means thirteen guys worked full-time for a year.
And I know this because I went through the warrants. Mr. Mutev was kind enough to tell me how to do that, and I spent an evening porning through the warrants and totaling up every single, and then I got the invoices from the city to go through and confirm and fact-check.
And to be clear, that three years is after the ninety-two Main Street intersection was completed?
Yes, yes, it is. Yeah, that's only, that's 2011, yeah, 2013.
Trails and the bridge and whatever other work is going on with the city streets?
So it's okay to blame CSG as the executor of the decisions that we made, but, and this is where this sort of transcends from a practical discussion about how do we save the bridge to a political discussion about how do we save a town. To me, the bridge is not, the, the bridge is hugely important to me, obviously. The amount of time I've invested in it is profound. But the reason we got to the bridge, and my kids growing up in this town are what's got me fired up now, because the, I could sit here and go on for hours about all the different parts and pieces that I found with money going to places that it does not or should not be going, and it's not transparent. It is a very, I don't know if it's by design or just the way it is, but it makes me think about our federal government and think, how could anyone understand that? If I can't, in a month and a half, and I'd like to think I'm a reasonably bright guy, and I have everything the city will give me, in a month and a half, I can't figure out what's going from here, for example, to the Main Street Bridge. I can figure out in global terms, Streets and Roads, but I can't figure out even grants. Oh, here's another one, actually. Five hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars in 2010, 2011, they had a shortfall. They put five hundred and ten thousand dollars in miscellaneous revenue. No identification, nothing, just miscellaneous revenue, oops, we found half a million dollars. It's like, and which also makes me wonder, who's reading this stuff?
You are.
Thank the bridge, sir.
So, my name's Hal, how about, firstly?
Hi.
First of all, thank you, because, you know, all of, everything that, you know, Chad said and other people have said about the work that's been done, the information that's been unearthed, the analyses that have been presented, it's, in less than twenty-six thousand man-hours?
I'm not sure how much less, but yes.
They've already produced work on the other side of the scale that is sufficiently, you know, valuable and enlightening to allow everybody here to be able to weigh in and say, let's all meet in one room and figure out, you know, what should be done. And when you reach the political side of it, you know, I've lived in this town for twenty-some years, and it's always struck me that things don't work very well in this town. I've always kind of wondered why it's not getting better. And I gradually came to the conclusion, it's not getting better because people in the town don't really, aren't really serious about making the town work better. And I always wondered what the impediments were to that. And, you know, I've gradually come to the conclusion, as I think, you know, many here may have, that apart from the question of how you use the laws and established policies to put a brake on this process, that ultimately, if you have a city council that is intent on doing things like this, and you leave them in place, they will always act in those ways. And that the only long-term solution while you hold this off and perhaps defeat this particular project in its current form is to put a better city council in place. And I think we went through this with the fire board, you know, watching the controversy a decade ago, and then how it all leaked back in because, you know, there are people who just want to do this. And ultimately, the community rose up and said, okay, we have to change the fire board. And, you know, they said, that can't be done, these things are not easy. It was done overwhelmingly, and it was done with coalition of people from many walks of the community, as this room has today. You know, so, you know, my own opinion is, and I don't speak for anyone else, although I've spoken a lot, to a number of people who, you know, are integral to the process of the recall in the past and presumably would be integral to the process of electing council, that you got to replace the five of them.
Why don't you go up there and sit next to him?
Well, he asked for people in the community to offer opinions and for more leaders. I just wanted to express that I think the next job is to organize that.
All right, wait, let him talk.
Let me just follow up on what Hal said. Hypothetically, let's say that the city council goes ahead and whatever recourse we would like to do doesn't work. And hypothetically, next November, the three who are up for reelection don't get reelected, and what I would call progressive candidates come in. What are the consequences? How much will we have lost if we don't get anything done for the next year?
Let me, okay, so this sort of leads to, we drifted off where we were going, and I apologize for that. So let's assume for the moment, and there's a reasonably good probability that our efforts to derail this are going to fail. And let me offer one other thing. Our efforts at this point are not to derail it, they're to get it out of the categorical exclusion, if you remember, I talked about that earlier, to an environmental assessment. If they have to do an environmental assessment, then they have to consider alternatives at that point. They can't pay the lip service that they've paid to the project as it sits. So for us, that's actually a win. They're still spending a ton of money with UR. It's not a financial win for the town, but it's a win for the people that want to preserve the bridge because there are, even, for those of you who follow, talk about Mr. The Honeybath who grew up in Ottawa or wherever he lives, I mean, even he forwarded a pretty sound proposal yesterday for how the bridge could be rehabilitated. So that's our goal there. But overall, are we going to get Caltrans to say, well, stop, you can't go anymore? No, we're not going to do that. So then the question becomes, what do we do? And the answer is simply is, I think the answer's two parts, and I'm going to let Carol and Lenny take this for a few minutes. The answer is an initiative which is placed on ballot, which in effect will prescribe, this is where we've been talking, I would like to see it address all city-owned historic structures for the future so we don't have to go through this again in the future, but whether it's that or the bridge, but it would prescribe destroying the bridge without a majority vote or sixty percent, whatever. I don't know the initiative, and Carol, if you want to run with that, because you've been working on that. I really haven't, I've done nothing on the initiative to this point.
That's been the attorneys that we hired to present our cause at the last meeting have been talked to. We've been in meetings considering them drawing up an initiative. I actually don't know too much about it at this point in time. It's still on the, we're still developing that.
Can I just say something?
Yeah.
So, an initiative is always important to be as clear and as simple and directive as possible. So in this case, it would be logic, and you have to, it has to be by an ordinance, and it has to amend something in the city's general plan so that the voters have mandated a certain thing to the city council to be effective. So in this case, it's being looked at by the attorneys, but the circulation element that the city just approved could be amended to require that if the bridge is demolished, it would require a vote of the people to do that. So the voters will, you know, this would be on, it's only be on the November ballot along with the election for the city council, three members. The voters would direct the council not to destroy it unless the voters kind of approve it. And this is just in my experience. I don't know if you want me to stand up now. I've been involved in two county-wide initiatives. The first one was in 1986 when our county supervisors were probably going to undo a lot of the policies on our coastal plan that had been adopted by the board of supervisors six years before. So, and also there was, offshore oil drilling was being proposed off of our coast. So we took thirty, thirty-eight policies of our coastal plan and amended some of them a little bit, but especially having to do with offshore oil drilling. So it had two parts. One was that prohibited onshore oil facilities for offshore oil drilling, and it also enacted many of the policies in the rural area of the county outside of Half Moon Bay and down the coast to Santa Cruz. That, those policies can't be weakened or discarded by the board of supervisors unless the voters approve of those actions. They can be strengthened but not weakened. So that passed, that was the first ever county-wide initiative that passed by sixty-four percent. The second one was the double-slide tunnel initiative, which happened in 1996. And there, the voters again mandated that a tunnel be built instead of the bypass that Caltrans wanted to build. They amended our coastal plan to say, build a tunnel. And so that was approved by seventy-four percent. And in the end, that tunnel measure, I think, was very instructive because we could not win politically. We had only two votes on the board of supervisors to proceed ahead with studying the tunnel more thoroughly. So you need three votes, and so, you know, and you have to win politically. You can go to court, you can do all sorts of things, but that doesn't really change the outcome. So the voters spoke, and Caltrans got the message, and then the Caltrans worked incredibly hard and cooperatively with agencies in the county and anybody else who wanted to participate for a long time, much longer than anybody thought it was going to take. But anyway, we have a tunnel. So it was due to the people who spoke and said, build a tunnel. In this case, I think, again, this is going to become the people's bridge, and people are going to say, save this bridge. And, you know, the city council will have to abide by that, but I think it's the most effective thing to do, and it will change. And this happened in Yeltsberg. I know some, several people spoke about the Yeltsberg Bridge at prior previous meetings. And Yeltsberg was going to destroy the bridge across the Russian River. It's also an historic bridge. And the city council was supporting that until somehow they convinced the city council to restore it. So it applied the same pot of money, and well, might not be a slightly separate pot, but the highway bridge funds in Washington DC can also be used for renovation, restoration of the bridge.
Rehabilitation. And actually, that's, to go back, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is actually important, going back to the, and I call it a charade because that's really what it was. You sign a contract to replace the bridge, and then you spend a year saying, we haven't made up our mind, we're not going to replace the bridge.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not ticked off because I didn't go to any of the meetings, but for all those of you who did and who spoke at them, I would be flamed right now. It'd just, my head would explode. But the, there was a thought there.
The money, it's available.
The money, sorry. So the, Tony Conati at the April meeting, you know, said specifically, just let me finish this one thought, and then, said specifically that rehabilitation is a viable option, that, but federal funds aren't available for the bridge because they won't remediate the, our word there. This is what happens when I don't drink enough coffee. The bridge insufficiencies, the biggest one is just the approach angle to the bridge.
The geometric.
So the city even, so they went through this whole charade in and of itself, and through the charade, they were putting it kindly, misrepresenting the fact that there are tons of funds out there for the rehabilitation of the bridge. There's no question of would it be more expensive or less expensive for the city? Who knows? It would be a cheaper project. So whatever our share would be, if it was the same twelve percent or if it was twenty percent or whatever else, who knows? But they never even, it never even crossed the radar.
So the challenges are difficult or less difficult for the city to replace the bridge as opposed to restoring?
Neither. They're the same. The city goes to Caltrans, so this is what we want to do.
But there's federal funding that would not be available for repairs that would only be available for a new bridge?
I'm sorry, I asked that question again, I'm sorry.
There are federal funds available to the city, but only for a new bridge versus repair.
No.
No.
The program they're using is called the Highway Bridge Rehabilitation and Repair Program. There are funds available for both.
So to understand why the city is pushing so hard to replace the bridges opposed to repairing it, may not necessarily be completely financially motivated?
No, he says completely financially motivated.
You keep saying to fall in money, but if we can use the same funds to repair versus to build new?
You have to apply under a different grant. You can't. So the proposal is that the HBDRP packet that they submitted was submitted for a replacement of the bridge. The funds, the program will provide funds for rehabilitation of the bridge. You actually have to apply for those.
So they have to reset. So they made that decision, but we don't know, we do not understand why. We don't know why they're so held out on a new bridge.
I have little insight into that, and that is CSG from the Word Go said, their first, so this popped up, this all stemmed from a 2009 Bridge Inspection Report, which quite frankly was identical in context to the 1999 report, the 2001 report, the 2003 report, the 2005, seven. We get to 2009, Mo Charman takes a look at this report, says, holy dang glitter. We get to 2009, Mo Charmer takes a look at this report, says, "Holy, we need a new bridge." So by June or July of 2010, they've decided they need a new bridge. They present, I think it's on June, first week of June, they present, they actually go to Mr. Noack again, who just seems to be the root of all evil. Charmer gives an interview to him, talking about bridge walls flipping off and blah de blahs. And the next week, they present the CSG proposal, which is, "We have to replace the bridge." The same article, more or less edited runs. And then, the next week after that, the city's backtracking, because they've convinced the town that the bridge is about to blow up. Oh my God. And so they, then they go on, and then they have the third interview, which is, "Oh no, it's safe, it's not going to fall down right now, it's just we have to do something for the future." Okay, whatever. But it all came from CSG and Mo Charmer. It was the genesis of the whole thing. And from that, from the first mention of the bridge, in public or private documents, it was, "Replace the bridge."
Don't say it.
Don't say it. And initially, it was, "Replace the bridge," because holy crap, it's going to, it's going to blow up.
I have a question for Lenny and you. I have heard, I have no idea what the issue on the ballot for next fall. I've heard comments, they want to have a recall, that the two people are not going to bring in a ballot. Is that a good approach?
Boy, that's an interesting question. My short answer is, and I've sort of evolved on this, as I've gotten deeper and deeper into what I consider to be questionable. At any rate, my personal, this is my personal opinion, that's all it is. Recall should be for the literal high crimes and misdemeanors. If you voted someone in, if you elected someone to office, and you don't like what they legislated, well, you voted in there, so you deal with it until you're done. I think the recall of the fireboard is a good example of how destructive and dividing a recall can be, without taking a side there either. It's just, it was a very divisive recall. So a separate recall, I think, is a very bad idea, because it creates more angst over something that we really want to decrease the angst about. A recall at the next election to sweep the city council, I don't know that it makes any sense, because if we get three people elected, they overcome the two that are there, whether they should be there or not.
I can predict, I'm afraid, what I think would happen if you use the logic of, "We're going to replace three of them anyway, so there's no point of also recalling the two," and I'll explain my thinking, which is...
One minute. I'll write it up in part two.
Let me actually, before I explain your thinking, let me be clear here. I don't assume that we're going to replace three by default as a given, or as a de facto statement. That's part of the word, is replace the three. If we replace the three, and the three are, you know, creative, thoughtful, intelligent, certain things that I think might be lacking, hang on, I think there's, then that takes care of the problem. I'm not saying it's going to happen, there's no assumption there. There are some very powerful people running against, so, anyway, you want to do it.
So, first of all, just the one-minute problem is, if you can't solve your problems in one minute, it's maybe easier to not solve them.
Well, the real issue is, Kim's got a wedding that she's got to prepare for, so we've got 26 minutes.
I can be very, I can be very quick, but I mean, there's going to be a couple pieces to it. One is, you've shown where the money is going, and you've shown the money problems in the budget, which are not transparent at all. So, you know, ultimately, you know, you have to dig all this stuff out, you have to put a better administration in place, or that kind of problem will continue. It'll just continue in other things, and other groups will gather to deal with that. But, the problem of replacing the three city council members who are up for election and not the other two, is that when issues have occurred here, and, you know, the initiatives that Lenny, that John, and people like that have worked for, have often won overwhelmingly, because issues can be discussed, and very clear majorities and supermajorities form around them. But, when the issues are not the driver, and the people, the qualifications of the people are the driver, the same people, the same group continues to run the town in the same way, and I think the issue will switch back to, "Yeah, but there's more than just the bridge, and oh, already we've backtracked the bridge, so keep us," and then, you know, you'll have to fight this fight again next year, or three years, or eight years from now. That's why I think if you also make the issue, "These five people have done this, they've made these decisions, they need to be replaced," it'll keep it to the issue.
No, and there's, George, you have, yeah, it's kind of, it's one of that, but one thing I think that you might want to be aware of is that, and this is more than just my opinion, but I'll state it as my opinion, that what we have here is patterned behavior from the city. I hope that I would cite this, and the circulation element, I would give a very good example. We're more, we started with it.
Yeah, you're nice and loud.
You never heard anybody tell me, George, to talk.
I'll speak louder. Not so fast, thank you.
Or stand up. The circulation element started, and I don't want to get into a whole long thing, because we don't have a lot of time, but it started in the sunroom at the Adcock Center with a interim planning director, who, it was her very first meeting, and really had no clue how to spell the coastal lack with all the letters in a magnifying glass, let alone actually understand the circulation of the coast. So what we have here, and that's just one other example, is a patterned behavior by the city in how things get done. And I would offer that, if the council is taking the path of resistance, if we're told what to do, rather than actually tell somebody else what to do. That's just one way. You might want to keep that in back of your head, because there's others.
So again, I mean, I've lived in the community for almost five years now, I think, the path that there is, is a long and varied one. But I come at this without, the prism I'm viewing this for, from, is, I think, different from most of you. And what I think is brilliant about the bridge, is it's brought people into the same room, working together, that historically were on very strongly opposed and personally important sides of issues. When I look at, because I spend a lot of time trying to reason out how a town filled with so many really amazing people has a government that I can't find anything redeeming about. I, you know, and what I look to it as is, you know, we as a community, if we want to change this, it's, it sort of goes back to what I said about, it's our fault, but it's the way it is. If we want to change this, we have to put aside all the petty partisan BS that we have the other, you know, and I'm neither. There's growth, anti-growth, there's Republican and Democrat, or maybe they go the other, I don't know, I don't care. But we have to set that stuff aside, and one way or another, take control of the city council, whether that's by kicking, kicking out or electing three people, and again, my criteria are thoughtful, creative, intelligent. The political parties, the growth, anti-growth, I don't care so much about it. I'm more interested in having people that have the ability to look at this stuff and figure it out, because this is not trivial. If we're going to unwind this mess, it's going to take people that are both determined to do it, and are capable of doing it. And that's a non-trivial problem to solve.
Left off honest.
I want you to wish for it in one election.
We've been going on, we've been going on the assumption that we're going to win all three seats. If we don't win all three seats, we don't have a public council.
Correct. And I, and just to go back to that, the one thing I have, the concern I have with the initiative, and this is something Lenny and I have talked at length about, is the initiative could fail. We all think, you know, we all love the bridge, everybody here obviously cares about the bridge, so it's, who could vote against the bridge, right? My office mate came in the other day, said, "What do you know?" I think we should get a new bridge, that bridge isn't, come on, historic, it's 100 years old, get rid of it. Okay. There are people out there that are not going to see that argument. And the thing is, is all we have on the table is the initiative. And it loses, and it could lose, then we're really in trouble. George, change it just a second.
The thing I would add to that, though, is if a piece of this discussion is a recall of council members rather than an initiative above the bridge, I think there's a much weaker position there. I think some of the people on council have been in town for a thousand years, and they've got strong name recognition, and people just think that they're dedicated local citizens, and they're the greatest, and let's stay with them because they care. Right, so I think recalling the council is not a, I think it's about getting the right people on the ballot, seeing how that election goes.
I agree.
If there's an initiative, it needs to be about the bridge, not an initiative, not an effort to recoup.
I agree. I mean, functionally, I still agree. Having said that, I try to adapt, and if I keep digging up stuff that simply doesn't add up, I might get to a different point. And the one thing I'd offer, one reason I did want to have this meeting, was to reach out, to ask people to help. I can't continue to expend the energy that I've expended on this, and there is stuff that needs to be plowed through, that needs to be researched, that, there's a lot of work to be done. Frankly, if, if I'm right, and it's a very big if, I'm pretty sure I'm right about some of it, some of it, I just don't know, there's just stuff there that doesn't make sense, but who knows? You know, if I'm right, for example, that basically the Naomi Patrick trails were not funded properly, so they spent us into a $4 million hole building these trails, which are now named after the eponymous Naomi Patrick, we may not need to have a recall election. I mean, if there was that much malfeasance at the level of the city council, or the city manager, or both, the recall election may become a moot point, because there's, I just don't see how anyone would continue under that cloud if it were present. But, yeah, fair enough. Fair enough. Sure.
Does your name just count in controversy?
Why are you going to get the similarly works like down here with the news crew, and they get on the news, all ready, around the state, season three?
Because it won't change, Caltrans isn't, the things that are, this is not, TV appeals to emotional realities, this is not an emotional battle right now. I mean, it is for some of us, obviously, but it's not a battle that can be won by, I mean, for God's sake, you had 100 people at the city council meeting, all of whom were, I mean, this isn't about swaying opinion, this is not about swaying opinion. It just doesn't, it's not what it's about. It's about basically holding them to the letter of the law, and it is necessary changing the law.
They all buy, they outsiders, you do, they're on town.
But I'm not, I'm not, I'm not alleging that.
The thing is, the city council itself knows the bridge is safe, but they're trying to get the money from California, say, let's say, you stack a mill, $8 million to replace the bridge, we have today. And that's all looking for, money. They don't care about the money.
I would, I'd just like to suggest.
How about speak up? You can sit, but just speak up.
If I might, I would suggest that at the September 17th meeting, an action was taken by the city council.
Well, actually, if I can interrupt you for a second? It wasn't. The action was taken two years before.
But, just for the sake of argument, that action was taken by the city council September 17th. What I would like to know now is, the process, the protocol, where we can interrupt the protocol, and the strategy that we're going to take, we will discuss taking, or strategies that we discuss taking, in terms of educating the public, for example, personal market. An ad review every week, to educate the public, a different, a different piece in review every single week, a current page, that we educate the people from when the bridge was built, to where we are right now, which will probably take quite some time and generate some stress for our own newspaper, but the point is, we can do and help educate the folks. These are two things that, the process is already born, now we need to know where we're going to step in, what windows are available, how they're going to be available, when they're available. That's part of strategy, and also educating the public is another part of the strategy, so that we can influence things later, initiate an election for our actions.
No, I think you're, you're, yep. I mean, it...
Could you mind offering my word?
I've met your wife, she's a very nice lady. You don't want me to. Where we are, we're pursuing, and functionally, Lenny and I will continue to pursue the Caltrans dialogue in the background, which is going to lead somewhere or not, if the case may be. The, I think George makes a perfect point, which is the other thing I wanted to sort of put together here, was to start working together as a group. The one thing I noticed walking into this blind was, and the reason I did what I did was because no one's, it's, why not? Someone had to, you know, so we've all, we've got all these talented people, and we're not really working as a cohesive unit, and whatever it is we need to do, I'm not saying there wasn't anything to do yet, but whatever it is, we're not really working as a cohesive unit to, frankly, forward our agenda, or forward the agenda of preserving the bridge. There are a lot of things we can be doing to already start raising public awareness, so that when step two, which is the initiative, I mean, there's only two ways we functionally kill this, the initiative, or we get city council to change their mind. Or we hit a home run with Caltrans, which I'm in the bottom of the ninth in the World Series, I just don't see that happening. So...
Is the judge another way?
Ironically, the way SEQA, which is the environmental process, SEQA and NEPA, that it's going to be going through here, that have already started, NEPA they're on now, or is SEQA they're on now?
They're doing NEPA first.
They're doing NEPA first, okay. So, these are the two environmental processes that have to be gone through. The intent of the legislature is that litigation is the way to police SEQUA. So, in some ways, I think they've already, they've already crossed the threshold, where if you were creative and had money to burn, where you could litigate and start litigation. The problem is, we don't have really imminent harm, I mean, no one's sitting out there with a pickaxe, ready to tear the bridge down. So getting an injunction to stop the process is going to be difficult, which is very frustrating, because if this process continues, every day that goes on, URS is billing us $232 an hour, for every hour that Ramsey hiss and spends, talking on the phone, going to a meeting, you name it. David Anderson, the guy that made up more stuff than I can even check a stick at, is getting paid $120 an hour. The engineer, they budgeted eight months for one engineer, eight months, full-time work, to design our bridge. Sixteen hundred, thirteen hundred?
We built that.
I'm sorry?
They've already built that.
No, that's part of the, that's part of the cost summary, that's in the do not, that goes to do not exceed, so they can, all they have to do is show that they spent it, and it's gone. At the tune of $151 an hour. 1300 hours at 15, I'm sorry, 1300 hours at $151 an hour, for one person. And every day that this process goes on, that money is pouring out of the community.
That's the best political argument I can make. The recall, you know, centered around, the fireboard centered around two things. The first was keeping CalFire, and the second was dollar impact on the taxpayers.
Yeah, the...
Let's move on to, let's move on to the next point. In the political discussion, what should we do?
Hang on. No. What should we do? We need to find, and again, this is, this is just my opinion, again, coming in with a less biased view than everybody else. I have my prejudices, just like everybody else, but mine have been generated or germinated in different places. I think the short answer is, we need to find three candidates to run as a collective group that are viewed as a collective group, who are, who are focused on two things in my mind. One is preserving the bridge in its current state. That doesn't necessarily have to be the first thing, but it's one of the most, again. And the other is, and you know, I hate this, because you see, I want to be a reformer, I want to be, it's like, well, okay, great, but the point is, we need to go in and gut this and start all over again. I mean, this is so functionally broken, that the three people need to be committed to the time and effort and energy it's going to take to dismantle the contracting system that we have in place, that you rightly noted is fraught with conflict of interest. So we're talking about re-engineering how the town is governed, but at least in some ways, or not governed, but run. And that's going to take, one person's not going to do that, two people aren't going to do that. It's going to take three, and it might take five. And it's not going to be easy, because every one of you sitting here has history, and it's not going to be easy, because you're going to have to make decisions that, you know, are going to take off some of the people some of the time, and whatever else. But that's, my long-winded answer is, we need to find three candidates who can transcend the political history of the town, and work as a team, if you will.
But you've already outlined that the city's spending $2,600 a day, seven days a week, just for, just for CSG.
Yep.
URS.
CSG. That's for all the, that's for, there's a laundry list of stuff that...
So that goes on from now until next November?
Mm-hmm.
And it's not until after next November that the bridge process...
Say goodbye to another million dollars.
Yeah. It's going through money.
Forgive me, it pisses me off to no end, but I got to do about it. I mean, you know, you've got to give me the strength to... I mean, you know, you've got to give me the strength to change the things I can, accept the things I can, and those are the ones. So, wow, that got a lot. Actually, let me go, you haven't spoken, so let me.
Could the city council decide the opposite tomorrow if they want?
Yeah.
If they wanted to.
If they wanted to. And, well, I think there's two, there's two parts to that difficulty, though, because they, and I'm still, I haven't spent a lot of time trying to learn how the city council functions, and laws, and so on. But you have to get it as an agenda item at the next meeting. So first, you'd have to convince city council to put it on the agenda to reconsider, and then you'd have to get them to reconsider. My guess is, they're not going to put it on the agenda, because that would force them to reconsider, if you may.
One thing which hasn't come up is, is the history of the city council that put its supply at odds with the downtown business owners, including, you know, such things as pressuring the business owners to support sales tax increases, that when a sales tax didn't ask, an angry outburst, and a remark like, "Well, if you let the bridge fall down, that'll teach 'em," and stuff like that. So, you know, one of the political elements, I think, is, when the paper ran a headline that said, you know, the chamber of Congress says it will cost, you know, local businesses $5 billion, which this is done, you know, I'm sure that that's the motivation, you know, for some of you who have actually expended money, who are close to the bridge, you know, to not let that happen.
No, not in my, not in my, I don't have that position. My position is, the city council is responsible for doing the right thing. It's, yes, I am closest to the bridge, but if they keep going the way they're going, I'm scoundred that they've been letting this this long. It's not because I'm close to the bridge. I'm going to the city council to be responsible for all of Main Street, if the bridge closes, you know, all of Main Street's going to break, but that's not really the point. And I just want to add to that a little bit. We have to start from the top. And that's, and that's, our goal is to get three responsible people to run the city. Three, we have to get three voted in, so that, so that we have the confidence that somebody's going to run the city well. We don't have that confidence. And from there, we have to get the initiative out, and we have to educate the public. That's what we have to do. Get those three people in there, show why we want them in there, show why we think the city council right now is not doing the job that the citizens have had in Bay Harbor. Okay? So we have to start, start at the top, not just the bridge, but at the top, and include the bridge in our direction.
Time out. Time out. Real quick. Time out. Why don't we form an ad hoc committee?
Yes.
Appoint somebody as our chairman, and roll on from there.
Yes.
Thanks for the validation. I'm sorry, this gentleman, this gentleman's been very patient, because he's on the side of no one's song, but please, by all means.
Why not for all families? Everybody lives on the coast side loose here. Like most families, somebody pisses somebody else off, and they add da-da-da-da. But you can't just excommunicate people because we don't like them, or we don't like what they're doing. The bridge is a, is a great opportunity to do something positive. It can also just be another chance to this, everybody kind of fight like junior high kids, you know, go back and forth, and blame, and blah, 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 and run it into ground on side issues. I'm interested in what the city does with the physical construction work, because that's my money, and when it's done, it's what I have to live with, and what I have to see, and what goes on. And so it seems to me that there's problems with the bridge, regardless of structural integrity, or age, or any of that kind of stuff, that have nothing to do with the bridge. There's just more issues that could be improved about that bridge, that help Main Street. And so how we go about that is, for me, the more important process. And I apologize if this goes on a little too long.
No, but we can adjourn if, if we broke up, we can adjourn to the, to the, so.
Yeah. I mean, you have about two minutes, or what?
Oh, yeah. Uh, please.
So, it seems to me that this is a good chance to take something where there's an issue, that's a real physical thing, not a process that people complain about, and work on a better proposal of how to fix what's generating a problem here. Seems to me like, this is a real opportunity of a group of people getting together that don't usually get together. And I know, some of you, I don't know all of you, some of you I've worked with professionally. I'm not talking from inexperience, I'm an architect, been in the town a long, long time, done a lot of projects here. There's a lot of opportunities that people aren't even talking about yet, that could happen with a project around this bridge, in one form or another. And the challenge that I see, and Jules most specifically, that your eyes are open today, is, there's a single source of information coming to the city council that's silly. I mean, it's like if you have a conflict, and everybody hires one lawyer to solve all the problems for all the sides.
Yeah, fair enough.
And if the lawyer is only sort of average. We live in the Bay Area that has some of the most talented people in the world, for figuring out and solving problems, and making them look good, and work correctly. Why aren't we able to hire those people? I don't understand. It's beyond me why, they don't cost more money than someone else, and yet, here we are, you know, working with sort of averagely talented people, and I say that because of the results of the projects they've already done. This is the-
Yes.
Yeah. You articulated, you articulated something that I came to maybe a month ago, when I really realized. Oh, but, sorry, please.
You guys could do it. You need some leadership. It isn't going to be me, I'm not the president of something or other. But I've worked for clients for years, that they have the capacity to say, well, we figure out, this, this is something, this is a goal we want to accomplish. It's not a goal wrecking something, or stopping something, it's a goal that gets something done. And then they hire the people that are the right people to do it, and they don't tell the people how to do the job. You know, that, we're kind of stuck here. We have a lot of people in this community. In the past, people have approached me to do something, but then they want to tell me how to do it, so I have to kind of decline, because I'm saying, well, you know, you seem to know what you want, so why, even though you're the amateur, you're not the professional. One, yeah, go ahead. And so, we're kind of victim of that. And it's rare that we get an opportunity, that everybody goes, you know, here's this bridge, and everybody likes it because it's old, it's kind of critical because it's business survival, kind of, you know, for a consulting firm to say, well, we're going to close it for 10 minutes, is ludicrous, that they'd even come up with that. Whoever hired that, so, not to get, there's a lot of issues around the bridge that lots of people are interested in, and have their lives depend on it. And we certainly ought to be able to use that as an issue, to say, hey, community, we can move ahead and do something positive. And I don't think we're going to do it by changing any political figures, because no matter who politically is in office, they're going to be victim of what the advice they're getting, and how that's moving forward.
How that's moving forward.
Good question. You know, how do, how do we unhire one consultant?
That's where, that's where-
They decline, they decline shit, they do advice, they do engineering supervision, and they make the money.
And I wouldn't be surprised, they don't have some banking arm that does the construction fund. Chad, what do you think?
Yeah, I think you're right.
I think it should be made clear that, I think CSG, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think CSG is a consulting outfit, that has their, our outside contract engineer, Mo Charman, was hired to CSG, and I think they recommended URS, and they, I agree with you, that it's very much singular, singular stream of information that goes to city council. But CSG does not do construction, as far as I know. You think that's true?
No, they do, they do engineering, civil engineering, city engineering.
Project management.
Project and construction management.
Right. So there, there are the advice arm, and I think that it's very difficult, at this point, for citizens to unravel that contract. It has to be done to city council, and city council has been stayed away and put this on the agenda.
Let me interrupt you for a second. I'm going to say one word, and I just want everybody to think for, just the first thought that comes to your mind, okay? Staff. Okay. Well, John, I didn't think, they were after, but by all means.
Most cities are different, these staff. In all cities, staff is very important.
Okay, so, so staff, to me, works for the person, I have staff, right? They work for me. Our staff is Mo Charman, who doesn't work for us. The only legitimate staff members, I think, or legitimate people you could say are staff members, are Laura Snyderman and Siobhan, maybe a couple others, but, but, you know, when you've, when you've, when you're saying, they keep saying staff reports, and what I initially thought was, oh, it's the staff. When staff said, we need to have an increased sales tax, I was like, well, the staff must have researched it, and they must need to do that. Okay, whatever. But the staff is, at least to my understanding of the word staff, that's where it's broken. When, when your staff becomes hired guns, who profit from making recommendations, you've gone off the track.
This goes right back to what you just said, you know, we don't have, you know, the kind of people who understand how to manage staff on the council.
Well, whether they can manage staff or not, I don't know. They deliberately, or previously, I don't know exactly how we got here, but councils chose to farm out those responsibilities to contractors. That goes back to why I say we put ourselves here. When, when we decided to give contractors the control over what projects are going to be considered, 2010, in the budget for 2010, now, some of this might be influenced by post-wave press stuff, I get that. In the budget for 2010, there were exactly two capital projects in the budget. 2011, there were 25. How'd that happen? Because the guy we're paying to give us advice about what we should build, suddenly figures out that there's a whole lot of engineering to do. Or maybe not, maybe it's just coincidence, but it sure doesn't look like it. Sure.
In September, the city council passed that ordinance about the bridge, and it was basically a selection of one of, I don't even remember how, seven or nine options, or whatever it was, made up for option two. It's very interesting the way that vote went down, because Barma John proposed, I'm sorry, made a motion that option two be adopted. The option two, option, is about close the bridge, to make that zone into a construction area. Get rid of the traffic, close the bridge, tear it out, put it back, and that's the thing, is the least amount of time that the Main Street Bridge is closed. There was no direct second to that motion. Then Marina, who seemed to have looked at the issues the least out of everybody, said, okay, I will vote, I will second your motion, if you will amend it, to say that there will be, and at the same time, a temporary traffic bridge built next to the construction site, and a temporary pedestrian bridge built there. So, you know, one of the interesting physical questions becomes, how do you do that? Do you tear down this building, or do you just tear down that building across the street, so that you can put these temporary bridges in? And it takes the short-term construction-only zone, and turns it into a traffic and pedestrian plant?
They're drawing.
It can't be done.
They can't be done.
And it wasn't one of the options of seven or nine, or whatever it was. But the city engineers, the city engineer and his assistants, the people from URS, just sat there, who didn't say a thing, and it got passed. So what's been passed can't physically be done anyhow. You know, it's, it's a very interesting thing that they did, but basically what that vote was, was we're not going to consider rehabilitation, in one form or another, we're going to replace the traffic.
Yeah.
But what they voted for can't be done.
Yeah. I mean, it's, you know, again, grant me the wisdom to know what I can change, and accept what I can. If this were me, I'd be standing out there with a placard and stopping them, because the money that we're pouring down the drain on this right now, it just hurts to think about. I just, it literally hurts.
November's a long ways away.
Yeah. Well, yeah. If anyone has a suggestion that solves this problem more quickly, I am all ears.
What if the initiative goes on a spring belt, and that would be the-
What exactly?
A special election.
A special election, it's a lot more expensive.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a kind of prescribed time sequence of so many days before the election, and it's a higher bar to do a special. It just seems to be a better option.
Why couldn't you consolidate with June? Just based on, you know, you know, election time, or just mark, it'd be pretty, too pretty tight to do that. The city can actually decide to spend a certain period of time studying the initiative, once it's presented to them, studying it, so they could- I think it could be done by June.
You'll have a lower turnout. In the general election, and you wouldn't know that much.
Well, they're planning a continuation of the school parcel tech on the June.
I guess you have a weak turnout, you want the greater turnout.
Yeah, Charles Faye, he owns, he owns a shopping center back there, he came in with the most reasonable idea that I've heard. They have a way of making bridges, and, okay, why this bridge has to go, I've been here for 39 years, why this bridge has to go, just beyond me. And he said, they go, what they can do, he said, you know, and then just put in a bridge that you can drive over. You know, it takes like, it's like a two-day, two-day project. They build these bridges, and then put them together, done, problem over.
Yeah, that's a temporary.
You know, I, I think this thing is historical in Half Home Bay. I mean, they called it ugly in the Half Home Bay Review. Yeah, it sounds beautiful, but it's very historical. The historical part of that bridge is very important to everybody.
Yeah, I think, I'd offer two things. One, I think that the three-day estimate is a bit on the optimistic side. But I would also say that right now, you know, I'd say, oh, my dead body, that the bridge isn't going anywhere. I'm not really worried about that in the long-term scheme of things, because we have enough, you know, it, I'd like to think that being, you know, right morally, or ethically, or legally, gets you somewhere in today's world. I'm not sure it does. But we have enough, we have enough legal stuff on our side, and enough options right now, that the odds of that bridge, the odds of us either not being able to make the political cost of continuing to support that bridge insurmountable for people who ran office, or functionally stopping it with an initiative, or whatever, there are enough routes to, and, you know, we always have litigation. I mean, it, it, push comes to shove, a year and a half from now, but for some reason, it's still trundling along. At that point, we have litigation, so that's sort of the last resort, but it's still there.
You know, Half Home Bay keeps wanting to go into litigation, and go into litigation. This, this is a common problem for any viewer new to Half Home Bay, where, I mean, about, I'd say about 20 years ago, it started, where, oh, this one didn't like that, you're going to litigation, and then the litigation becomes constant, and causing our city a fortune.
I don't think we should leave here in 10 minutes without resolving some.
I agree with you.
And I think what we need to resolve is what we're going to do as a group, and who we're going to support, and how we're going to support them. And I think that's what the last 10 minutes of this discussion need to concentrate on.
Yeah.
Would you say you need to support people to support the bridge? A lot of people here, women here, in North Carolina, who are supporting all groups, what the council has said, and the means that it be destroyed.
Right.
And the thing is, the only two places we have now, historically, Johnson House and the bridge. That is it. Rest of the stuff, why news was here, have been destroyed, for money.
Well, Friday's been here for-
And I remember usually I have a joint.
Now, let's say one more.
There's a, there's a, there are a bunch of, I mean, we're actually eligible to be a historic disc, numerically. If you, if you take the number of properties that are, and the reason that's not even really worth discussing right now, is because that is a long involved process, it's not something that anyone else can slam out in two weeks and go with. But there are, there are dozens of named historical, the Benedetti Building, this building, the, I mean, there's, there is a wealth of historical, historically significant architecture in this community.
Let's just get to a final act.
Yeah, I mean, we are, we do need to be winding down, obviously.
I am now, and I'm sorry, it seems like a really vibrant conversation here. What if we picked five subject areas that really needed attending, and, you know, maybe do it in some sort of priority, well, one, two, and three need to happen kind of simultaneously, and four and five follow behind, and then, after that, we can sign our names to what we think we can work for, have another meeting, we publicize it more, maybe get the Half Home Bay Review to kind of get excited about the notion of maybe having a column in on what matters, so that we could publicize, and then get the people aware, who are reading the paper, and out-of-towners, I mean, I'm giving badges, save our bridge, to people who come into my little store, because they're appalled to hear about this. When they walk into other stores, they have the badge on. So I think we should generate that, because that flickers in people's mind, that it is, you know, an important, an important- important thing to be concerned about. I think we should maybe try to have this meeting in that direction of, you know, kind of clarifying what the subjects are, and then joining, having people say, okay, I have expertise in this, I've already done this before, I'm not reinventing the wheel, I'll work here, like that. So that's my proposition for this. But I think we should have another meeting, um, sometime, you know, either right after Christmas or close by, to see what we've come up with and think about the initiative. And I think, give it some idea, some, uh, the point of, of the June thing, I don't know if it's because it's not well-attended, these families go away, but maybe we really want the people who are staying, who are generally the merchants and the supporters of the merchants, they don't go away, they stay and work hard.
I think it's just this impact at the end of the general electorate large, and so because the June election is in the middle, it doesn't, it's not for people to turn out. I don't know that the low turnout necessarily hurts us or helps us, frankly. I don't think it really matters, but I'm pretty sure it's just that, that the low turnout in, in the mid, the mid midterm, the elections is, is just because we, we only get 40 to 50% of the vote.
But the publicity, I think, is important, and get Patch involved and get, you know...
Well, I could, I'd like to offer, yeah, no, I'd like to offer that the paper has been, uh, you know, whatever your feelings are about Clay, Pro, Con, or different, or Mark, for that matter, you can say anything you want about him, he's right there. They have been very supportive, at least to me, of, you know, the, the mayor wrote a fairly long editorial or opinion piece after the meeting. I wrote a very long, by their standards, response to that piece that I had sent to Clay, asked him to publish, and he published it. I mean, they've been very supportive of both researching the story, pursuing the story in all of its facets. The Page, I'm sure, would as well, and I, I think your, your points are well-taken that, um, the problem is we have a, a very diverse group of people who share a common interest as far as the bridge is concerned and maybe a sub-interest as far as the, the government of our community. And the, the question is, where do we go from there? I think we as a, we as a group or an organization need to, to define ourselves to a certain extent and then, um, figure out how we're going to make the changes we need, and how are we going to choose three, four, or five people? Are we going to pursue an initiative? I didn't even know an initiative was, was potentially possible for June. I'm not sure it buys us anything to go down that road, but it, it's, you know, it's a question that could be asked.
Well, I think if we want to, if the city council raised the issue of...
I agree.
But I think the other thing we can do in the short term to publicize the ongoing costs is to maybe find a property, put up a big billboard, and note the increase in costs on a weekly basis.
That's a...
Oh, great idea.
Like a thermostat? Or involvement around?
I think that like, when you're collecting charitable donations, you should...
I think if it's possible, you would be much better off with the June election for two reasons. One, the lower turnout, the people who care about this issue are going to have more sway in June than they would in November. And secondly, that's six months less of money out the door. But I, I don't know if, time-wise, if you can make it or not, but June would work a lot better than November on this project.
If you do it, if you do it in June, you're going to lose all your initiative. You've got to do it tied up to the people who run the city council.
And this, this maybe is a dialogue we need to have, I would say sometimes we're going to, we're going to establish items. Are you...
My suggestion is if you're going to start considering, um, campaign strategy and when to time an election, that sort of thing, you need a smaller group of people and people that have a lot of experience at that, um, so that you can make really smart decisions. They've got to be people that are very experienced with campaigns, and I'm sure that those people are available, you just have to pull them together and then really focus on what makes sense. A group this size can't sort through something like that.
No, and I agree with that fundamentally. The, the biggest reason for this meeting was just to get everybody in one room again and sort of recalibrate.
Some time ago, at this meeting, Jules made the suggestion that some sort of an ad hoc committee be put together before we leave here, and I guess the, the question that seems to be on the table at this point is what, what would that committee's mandate be, and who, who would be on that committee, and who would head it?
If, if I may, you've listened to a lot of different people here raise thoughts, react to things you've said, you've done a lot of research. If you were to look around this room and say, I'd like to ask five of you or seven of you to sit down in a small group a week from now and to work to transition what you said you want to stop being the sole leader of, which you said at the beginning, you know, you probably have a pretty good feeling for the diversity of issues and people, and everybody here admires the leadership that you've shown today and to date, and the leadership that a lot of other people have expressed. So maybe that would be a very easy thing for this group to agree on, and then over the next, you know, two weeks, four weeks, or six weeks or something, that transition to a plan, a long-term, you know, collective with a leader or leadership group established could be brought about without having to just make a random decision today.
Well...
Sign up everybody who's interested today.
Um, well, actually, no, I think, I think that if we did that, everybody would be signed up, right? And that's, the real imperative, or at least the most people would be. So the real imperative here is... I'm, I'm more than happy to sort of take charge for the time being of, of the group or whatever, at least in terms of organization, whatever else, not, not making decisions for the group, but just in terms of structurally moving forward. I think the idea of having a, a committee, um, of three, four, or five people to sort of pull us together and find a direction and come out with plans, recommendations, whatever, is probably the best idea. Um, I'm not sure, yes, I've been, been watching, I have, I have watched with a mindset of what people are saying and thinking about it and processing it. I'm not sure, just sitting here randomly, or not randomly, but sitting here saying, you know, you, you...
Maybe over the next week, you know, you've got this tape, you've got it in your hands, reach out to a few people, discuss, get some feedback.
Well, they also have to be willing. I mean, the question I ask everybody here is, you're here, which shows you're interested, and you, you're at least willing to get up reasonably early hour on a Saturday morning to, to be here, um, and participate. I mean, how many people are actually willing to, to make that investment in time to, because it's, it's not a trivial, it's not a trivial investment of time and energy. Is, is everybody here willing to make that investment?
We showed up at nine.
This is true. Where did the, where did the eight o'clock thing come from? I had a bunch of emails last night saying that there's confusion about eight o'clock, nine o'clock, eight o'clock, nine o'clock.
The first email we got, I got it saying eight.
It said eight?
He told me eight in front.
Cause I looked at the, okay, I need to go back and reread it somehow. Cause it, I'm very sorry.
We've taken, we've taken the call to...
You know, an interesting problem with this time commitment thing is, are you talking about organizational committee that'll put together some ideas and figure out what the next strategy is, and this takes place over the next six to, you know, 14 weeks, or is this a year-long effort in three meetings a week? Because, you know, some, some people, I think, could commit some time to this, but not full-time.
Yeah, I, I see, I think Mr. Maldonado had the idea that we'd meet, I mean, I see us meeting either in a month roughly, either before or after the New Year. I would see the, the committee sort of trying to coalesce the, the past action items and, and, you know, something you addressed, which I think is huge, is the sense of volunteerism in the community or the participation in the community. We've subjugated our needs to these five people and sort of said, you just go do whatever you need to do to make it work, whatever, and then we stopped hanging down. Um, you know, I'd put him on my committee in a heartbeat because he's an architect, no-brainer, right? I mean, so there's, there's people that, that everybody here has something to bring to the table, and I think if we can identify what it is we need, I need someone to help me pour through these numbers. I need an accountant, any accountant, just someone who does numbers. Find me an accountant. Were you raising your hand because you're an accountant, or were you...
I have a very clear statement yet about the problems we're going. The solutions come to be finding problems. Come up with a brand of...
The problems are the numbers that this...
I'm not here to hear, like you said, well, if you want to learn about this, it's not clear what it is you want to work on. So, I've been listening, and it's, and I've been around the issues, and I don't know that's not what you're talking about. So it's just, you know, re-advice.
It feels to me that you've got more traction on this subject right now than probably anyone else on the planet. So I'm wondering if in the next two weeks, you could put together a short list of what you think the action items are, get it out to this group, and see who feels they could contribute the most to which item. Maybe that's the foundation for your subcommittee of three or five people.
That makes a lot of sense.
Because that...
Yeah, I could definitely pull together a list of...
That answers a bit of what John's talking about here, and it addresses to a point what Jules is saying, let's get a committee together and move forward. Move in what direction? It's like you're in the middle of a river right now, the current is swirling.
And I think that's the other thing that I can probably coalesce into a more of a presentative form is, one of the reasons for me to call this meeting was to take the pulse of all of you here. I don't have an agenda ironically, other than saving the bridge, but I've found a lot of stuff that's of interest to me. And so one of the reasons I wanted to, to put all this out there was to see, okay, are people like, oh, we don't care? Okay, that's fine, we can go forward with that. Or are people like, wow, we really care. So knowing that now, that, that there's a lot of concern in the community about more or less everything that has been dug up today, I can focus that and say, these are the things we need to, to start burrowing through from a task standpoint. And, you know, the thing is, anybody can do it. And it's not, I mean, yeah, there's some things that are technical, you know, you and I went down, I took you down, just look at something because you build stuff. But a lot of this is just running out, I'm sorry, Mel, you were...
Well, no, I just, um, remember reading an email from the mayor answering why, answering his own question, why the bridge is needed.
That was the, the article in the Hefner Review, yeah.
Yeah, long time zone. Yeah, I read it, and somebody needs to counter him.
I did. No, it was published in, it wasn't in the same issue, it was in the next one.
I, I didn't maybe read that one.
Yeah, no, he, he, I specifically sent it to Clay to counter the, the mayor's...
Because I thought it was very fatuous and very soft-curved and completely, you know, doesn't take, and I, I just think we need publicity first, and we need to work on the initiative off of the political aspect. And since, uh, Sharice seems to be really on our side, and we already have a counter up there that's, you know, an electronic thing that tells about traffic and all of that stuff, we could have a numbers counter that says, as of today, we've spent so many dollars on the bridge, and...
We can't, the problem is we can't do that because this goes to the accounting thing again. They're not cost accounting. The invoices from CSG for the work being done on the bridge are not broken out by the bridge fund, so we can't say how much is, all I can say is CSG is billing us $2,600 a day. I can't say, believe it or not, which blows my mind, but I can't say, not because I didn't look, but because it's not fair. The invoices that CSG is submitting, you know, Mo Sharma does work, he, he has an invoice for professional services, it averages about $18,000, $19,000.
We're totally not.
I, I did, well, I definitely, I definitely think, I think actually, I think that in that particular instance, what, what Debbie started with, which was the, the CSG counter, because I see the root of all evil here is not the bridge and the money being spent on the bridge, it's the money being spent with CSG. And I think that that, I don't know how we implement that, but if someone wants to run with that, I would say, I'll give you the data you need and we can, we can go with it.
I just like, somebody said here, you have the idea of doing, you have to do the top five people, or the team, or the committee, or the group, they need an attorney, we need an accountant, we need a marketer, we need this and that, and we find out who those people are, and that's, that's the team.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, actually, that's, you just, you just summarized them. I need, well, what, and actually, I have a bridge, I have a bridge engineer, an engineer, a technical engineer, that'll be back in the country, um, a few days from now, who is willing to work with us. Um, but all engineers are welcome for obvious reasons. We desperately need an accountant, or more than one accountant, because me, me parsing through the books is great, and I'm a, like I said, I'm a reasonable bright guy, but I, we need an accountant because if we're really going to get traction with what I think is going on, we need way more than me to, to dig through that.
You need to match person to persons who are their side, architect, contractor, attorney, accountant. How is your position one for one, and where do you go?
So we're all sorry, you said engineer...
Engineer, accountant, an attorney would be fantastic, especially an attorney specializing in, that's a tough one. Um, contract law would be one. Remember I sent you the contract?
As an engineer, you need somebody that is a marketing person, somebody who can...
We need, we need someone who can, yeah, we need someone who can deal with marketing.
Who can frame the story after all this backstory, and goes out and...
Yeah. We need someone in construction, which is why I know, Houston wanted to say this, but I want him on my committee, because we need someone not just to, who engineers things, but who builds them and understands that process. We need someone who understands bidding, contracting from a city standpoint, because I didn't even touch on the, on the, the, the cost segment of the URS contract that I first held up at the beginning of the meeting. It would blow your mind if you saw the, the numbers that they, that our city has signed off on to pay them. It just...
You know, John, John said, as, as an architect, I can sign up to accomplish designing a project for somebody if they know what they want, to enunciate it to me. Uh, as a consultant, you know, I, I would ask here, have you discovered that there's a problem which is the bridge, or have you discovered that there's a problem, the symptom of which is the bridge? Does that make you...
The latter.
...passive man?
The latter. No, the bridge is, the bridge is the tip of the iceberg. Really. And the iceberg is so big right now that I don't know.
Some of the things you described are really the domain of, you know, technical committees that may work on defining those things, that we try, you know, an accountant, you know, who can go through and figure it out, you know, finding things there and just say, and so on. This is a multi-dimensional problem. It's not going to be solved by one group of five people.
No, it's not. And to be clear, the, the list of, of people is sort of addressing all of, so there's, there's part of that is addressing the need to, to technically be able to challenge, uh, the assumptions that have been given us about the bridge itself. Um, part of that is the accountant isn't really specifically for the bridge. The accountant is to dig into the, the underside of the, what's going on in city council. And, you know, you as a group may come to the conclusion that this isn't worth pursuing, which is fine. And that's sort of my point in being here was, you know, I have an interest in the bridge, I also now have an interest in what's going on in, in city council. But it's not really, it's not, this is not something that one person can do either, either practically from the workload or in any other way. It has to be a community that has decided, we want to look at this, we want to, if it's, if it's as we think it is, then we want to change it.
Sorry, again, this might have been discussed earlier, but, you know, the, the fact that in 2009 is when the powers that be here realized that the bridge was on shaking ground, they did or did not do anything about limiting seven-ton, eight-ton trucks.
Yeah, that's, the bridge is legal for all loads, then you, yeah, that was the question I can, I believe it was, it was legal. The, the bridge is, there, there is no weight restriction on the bridge. The city posted the weight restriction for reasons that are unclear. Caltrans has been definitive in their last report from July.
That was discussed earlier.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, oh, that's fine. We can continue the meeting in the bathroom. We just have to get set up for a wedding here by 12:00.
No, it's my pleasure.
So I'll, the bridge, we'll take a walk down and...
Okay, before we all turn, I'd just like to take a moment to thank David for this incredible amount of work.